Looks like we're at seven o'clock and I believe everybody is here, so I think we should call the meeting to order and note attendance.
Oden.
Thank you. If we could bring up the flag, we'll begin with the flag salute and then move into our agenda review. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic.
Under God.
Thank you. All right, taking a quick look at the end to everybody, I would accept the motion to approve the agendas published.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second it.
Moved in second and any further discussion?
Jonathan.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Janet.
Yes.
Tom.
Hi.
Lori.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Earth. Thank you. All in favor.
Thanks, everybody. So we do have a consent agenda item tonight, which includes the minutes from March 8th and the 22nd, as well as the approval of employment for a couple of employees. I would accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. We'll say Jennifer did. I saw her hand slightly first. Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? Okay, Debbie.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Janet.
Yes.
Tom.
Hi.
Lori.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Earth.
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor.
Right, next up, we have our student reps. Does it gonna be Tyson and Madison?
Tyson is here, but I don't see Madison.
Hi Tyson.
All if she doesn't, if she's not here. She not here? Go for it.
I don't see her.
Okay, I will just go through the entire thing. Sweet. All right, guys. Hello, I am Tyson Erickson, ASB president at Silverton High School. And to start off, our theater department is currently planning another virtual show. They are holding auditions next week and plan on having it available to everyone before graduation. And our band is currently excited to announce that there are five students who will be moving on to the state competition in May. After winning first place in the district for solo and ensemble contest, and Elise Carpenter, Carter Dowd, Avery Horner, Miguel Sanchez, Anna Muel, and Teresa Daggett will all be competing on behalf of Silverton in May. The Car Club is currently still up and running. They'll be holding their next meeting April 15th at 4:00 PM in the auto shop. National Honor Society is staying busy by hosting a successful virtual reading under the stars for elementary students. They are also organizing a book and school supply drive to assist in providing elementary schools with supplies and books. Silverton FFA recently competed in the district officer elections in which two positions are held by chapter members. They will also be beginning to prepare for state, which in early May, as well as planning their chapter officer elections and awards banquet. The S H S Mental Health Club is planning a virtual scavenger hunt for students to help encourage students to connect and have fun. The trap shooting club has been practicing on Wednesday nights. They had their first competition this week on Wednesday. Our softball team is currently very excited to get the season going after a long wait. They are very excited to be back and able to compete. On that note, spring sports have begun. Baseball, softball, tennis, track and field, and golf will be in full swing this week. And for our fall sports are all wrapped up with their season this past week with their final match games and meets of the season. Our girls varsity soccer team finished with three wins, two losses, three ties. Our boys varsity soccer team finished five and three. Our varsity football team finished three and one. And our varsity volleyball team finished eight and five. Our cross country team competed in their district meet in Lebanon on Saturday. The girls varsity team took second place with the best score they have had since 1996. In a normal year, they will be off to state next. The boys varsity cross country team went into district meet ranked fifth and came out with third place win overall. Abigail Espinaro won an individual medal coming in seventh place for the girls. ASB kicked off their 2021 virtual best Fox ever show this week to raise money for medical teams international and SACA Silverton area community aid. Six seniors will be competing for the coveted title of the 2021 best Fox ever. Contestants will submit fun videos each week as well as raise money for great causes. And that'll wrap up all the updates for Silverton High School. Thank you for your time and go Foxes.
Thanks Tyson, really appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. Thanks for having me.
You bet.
Thank you for coming.
Love the energy. All right, well, that's tough to follow here, but next up we have our school principal report with Silverton I.
I'm mute and start video. Now we can see me. Well, thank you. Oh, thanks to Tyson for giving us that update. Superintendent Drew and members of board, my name is Ed John. I'm the interim principal at Silverton High School. And certainly my honor and privilege to be the principal at Silverton High School. What a, what a great place to be. So you've heard lots of good things from Tyson already, but you know, this year our focus has been connecting with kids and building relationships. You know, last year we were in distance learning and then this year we started with comprehensive distance learning. So it's a little bit different. And then you threw in edgenuity and canvas. It was kind of a big learning curve for kids. Before we could even get started, then we had eight days of the wildfires. And then later on, we dealt with the with the ice storm, but the kids have persevered and working hard to help kids be successful. You know, in the beginning, we knew that kids were really kind of struggling and they were just feeling disconnected and didn't like the new format and didn't like being in school. And so we had a goal of kind of a rescue mission and try to help kids get reconnected. And so we actually had teams of two go out and do home visits to homes to talk to kids and parents about the importance of staying connected. Get online, sign in, have good attendance and do that work. Although no one seemed to be really excited about the Google meets, but we persevered and I think they persevered. But that was the focus of getting kids connected. And our staff is just had a focus of building relationships. My theory is no significant learning takes place prior to a significant relationship. And so that was a focus of the staff is how can we, that's not right. How can we build those relationships and feel like the kids feel like we really want them in school? So that was our faith of, that was our focus is building those relationships. So then we, we transitioned into the next step of getting ready for hybrid. And so that's been focused the last few months, even though we've only been in hybrid one week. And then minute Charlie's going to tell you about our first week in hybrid, but our focus was getting ready for it. And so our reopening team under the direction of Dr. Kristen Barnes worked with us every week, every Monday, 7:30 to 8:30 and thought of every possible thing we can do to prepare for reopening. And then actually had some subcommittees, orientation committee. We wanted kids to feel like it's going to be a safe place to come back. And so health and safety was our focus and having all those safety protocols in place so that kids felt it is safe to come back because you know, they've been in CDL for a year. And so now to come back, we want to be able to assure them that it is going to be safe. So that was the focus, getting ready for that. You know, the first half of the year, we really worked on social emotional learning. As you can imagine, being isolated for a year without any connections with friends. We had to spend some time on social emotional learning. And so that was real focus in our advisory groups. And you know, kids, if you ask them, who are the teachers you really know? You know, it probably start with their AG teacher because you know, they could have four different teachers every semester, but they have their AG teacher for four years. And so that was somebody that they really made a connection with. And then certainly the counselors as well. But AG teachers were the ones that reached out a lot, checked on grades and attendance of their students, even if they may not have them in regular core class. Just check with them. How are you doing? I noticed that you're kind of struggling in this area. What can I do to help and provide some support and resources? One of the things I appreciate about the staff is how they've embraced the curriculum mapping. And then next year we'll go to kind of step two of that, but really fits into the whole notion of PLC groups, professional learning groups. And so I think that's going to give them kind of an anchor starting point. And then next year we move to the next step of that. And I really appreciate those four ladies that are doing that work. In fact, I just had our conversation with Missy on Friday. And she's quite a resource that we have. I appreciate Scott making that happen for the administrators. You know, one of the neat things today had, I think it was 2:45, Dan came over and we got to recognize Kevin Ortega as the high school educator of the year. Kevin does amazing job. And so the SFEA folks recognize him and said some things and Dan did as well. And you know, one of the things that Kevin did earlier this year was he had community write every senior a letter. And so it's not just some parents in the community, but it could be the produce manager Ross or the guy that checks your, your air pressure at Les Schwab, but a variety of people wrote these letters to our seniors. Kevin, bless his heart, proofread every letter before we mailed them home to the seniors. But it's just basically, you know, we've know you've had a rough year. We know it's been difficult with CDL and, and being isolated. But hang in there, graduation's coming June 10th. And we have confidence in you and we care about you and we're pulling for you. So hang in there. And, and I think that meant a lot to our seniors and, and even some parents wrote me and said, hey, that was a great idea, great activity. So appreciate Kevin orchestrating that. Eric mentioned athletic teams. They're off and rolling. We finished winter, fall sports and now we're into spring. And I think some tennis matches were happening today and I'm going to softball games on Wednesday. But it's nice to see sports of this Saturday night. We had a football game and the parents of our senior football players and parents of our senior cheerleaders were all recognized just before the game. And so it was nice. We were able to do that. We can't fill up the stands yet, but at least we were able to have the parents there for that activity. You know, last year's graduation rate was 92%. You know, the state average is 80%. So 92 is better than that, but we're not going to pat ourselves on the back with 92%. We'll pat ourselves on the back when we get to 100% on June 10th. Have I mentioned June 10th yet? But you know, our counselors say we got five seniors that they're worried about, but they're talking to them. They're encouraging them. They're having them come in for what I like to call hybrid plus where they come in for some intervention and some extra support. But our goal is to have every one of our seniors walk across that stage on, on June 10th. I sent you that demographics page, you know, with 1,272 students, 1,024 in hybrid. When we have 90 in CDL, I was thinking we would have more than that, but I think kids felt it's safe to come back. And so most of them want to come back. So 90 in CDL and 97 in Fox Online. I think we have 14 kids at the transition program at Mount Angel. And 44 kids at Sequoia Falls. So that's a great resource. And that's one of the neat things about Silver Falls School District. They find resources to support our kids. You know, not every square peg fits in a round hole. I don't know if that analogy makes sense, but to me it means some kids need other options. And one of the neat things I don't appreciate about Silver Falls School District is they look for options to support every kid. So you solve our ethnic breakdown and a number of kids on IEPs and 504s and, and ELL. But we, our care team really works hard at identifying kids that need support. And then what do we do to provide those resources? Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. I think Eric mentioned some of the programs and I think he mentioned Dan programs that we had six different students that placed first in their solo competition. I think he mentioned that our choir has our corollaries. They placed first in the competition and they'll be going to state to compete against other champions from other school districts. We have five students placed first at the agricultural technology and mechanical systems career development event. That's a mouthful. But our CTE programs are doing an amazing job. Again, the, the variety of resources that our school district provides for our students is, is really amazing. This time of year, we're getting lots of students sharing with us their acceptance letters to different universities and colleges and different scholarships that they're receiving. Just to mention a few, Trevor Ortega is a national merit scholarship winner. Isaac Looney is a national merit finalist. Sophia Borkstet won the Heros Show Alger National Scholarship Award, which is a $25,000 award. Hayden Forster and Sophia Borkstet, both are Ford Foundation. They actually had Ford Foundation interview today. So I'll have to touch base with them tomorrow to see how their interview went. But we're getting lots of students with scholarships and college acceptance letters. I mentioned reopening team, appreciate them so much. And you know, our department coordinators, we had a great department coordinator meeting today. And what I appreciate about them is they are representing their department, but they also want to work together. And what can we, how can we make decisions that support our entire school rather than worrying about my specific department? We try to come to consensus and then have kind of a united front of here's what we, we as a team have decided. But you know, any success that we have this year, I think it goes to the staff. What, what a supportive group of staff members. I talked to Seoni on the phone or email him or text him each week. In fact, I think he's watching the school board meeting tonight. And I told him that, you know, Seoni, you're coming into an amazing job. This is a school district that people would die to be at. And I know I've enjoyed my time here. And, and I know he is excited to join the Silverton Foxes team. You know, I also want to mention ASB under the leadership of Heather Basher and the work that they've done. And by the way, this is national, was it National Student Leadership Week? And so Heather Knight in a little video to thank our ASB kids for the work that they do and helping kids stay connected. So lots of people to thank for the work that they're doing and helping kids be successful and help kids feel connected. And you know, now that we're back in hybrid, teachers are saying it's so good. This have kids back in the building. We're so much more productive when we see them face to face than a little two inch square like I'm seeing you right now. And, and I know kids are excited about being back too. We're all looking forward to next year, everyone being back full time. So let me ask Charlie to kind of share how he felt the first week of hybrid went and anything else you want to share. Charlie? Oh, Charlie Patrick is a senior. He's a soccer player. He's ASB member. And just somebody I've enjoyed to get to know the last couple of years. Charlie?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. John. I appreciate it. Um, yeah, as a senior walking in to the school, it's different. I kind of got the chance to walk through, go into a, to a soccer meeting and you, if you've ever been to London, you would know that it looks like the streets of London when you walk in there. There's passing lanes, there's stickers everywhere and your first impression is just wow, like this is complicated. But once you get in there. I came by Tuesday and Wednesday as an ASB member to greet the new students coming in. We're handing out gum, asking questions, getting kids to their classes where they didn't know where they were. New students who had been part of the high school for eight months, but hadn't stepped foot in the building yet. So we're leading them to their classrooms and just, you could see, even though they're wearing their masks, you could see the excitement. You could see the smiles under their faces. And as a senior, I'll be honest, it's difficult to come back. It's hard. You're, I'm already committed to university. Your classes are easier as you're ending the year out. Your grades are almost finalized coming into this next quarter. It's difficult to come back. But my excitement is for the other classmen, for those juniors who are going to come back and experience and start to experience some social, some, some of their friends, their teachers coming in and accepting. So that was my favorite part about coming back, just getting to see the smiles under the masks of those students and just, just being there. So on that same note, coming to the building, the teachers really care. The teachers care a lot about the safety of the students because they fought so hard and worked so hard to be able to do this safely. And they care a lot. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of distancing. Students are excited. You know, they're getting close together, but the teachers are really making sure that it stays safe. Kids' hands stay sanitized. People stay washing their hands. People stay six feet apart. Masks stay up. There's no moving around the classrooms and the teachers care a lot. And I think the students are taking notes from that and realizing that this is such a delicate situation. Especially with sports happening right now and kids being exposed through that because there's different, different rules with the OSAA. And so I think teachers realize it's a delicate situation and the students are catching on to that. And the students are really making sure that they can stay within the school. So overall, my, my experience coming back has been within my two days so far, has been positive. Even though I'm a senior and it's difficult to come back. I'm very excited for the upcoming classes and the chance that they get to have to experience some social before the end of the, before the end of the summer. So that's really all I have to say. And yeah, is there any questions for me about my experience with the school so far?
Where are you going to college, Charlie?
I'm going to be attending the Clark Honors College at the University of Oregon. I got, I got the presidential scholarship and will be attending and hopefully able to have a great time there. So yeah.
Congrats.
Another duck in town.
Go Ducks.
Yeah. Go Ducks.
Hey, thanks Charlie. Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Any questions you have for me?
No, I wouldn't mean for me. Thanks, Mr. John.
Thank you for opportunity to share and thank you for allowing me to be at Silverton High School this year. It's been my pleasure.
I do, I do have a quick question. Is this the last time we'll see Mr. John, you know, present to the board this year before the end of the school year?
Probably for this year, but you never know.
Well, I want to, I do want to thank you for stepping in at a time we needed somebody to be stable in this situation. And I think it speaks a lot to our community, you know, that you've been able to, you know, show up at our high school and, and, you know, give this, the staff the support they need in this extraordinary time. So thank you for being there. And I just wanted to, to say that to you if I don't see you again until graduation. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Shelley. I appreciate that. And I've received several emails from different board members and I just really appreciate the support and it's been my pleasure to be here. And, and I've, I just feel like, you know, I, my first principal job was in 1981. So that's, you don't have to be good at math. I've figured that's 40 years. But you know, I have really enjoyed this year, even though there's been so many challenges. We're doing the good work, you know, and and so it's been my pleasure to, as Scott says, here to serve you. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Well, next on the agenda, item seven, we have SFDA. So Michelle, welcome.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Hey there.
I was just texting Dan saying that Ed's a tough act to follow. Um, well, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that Ed actually said. First of all, when he was talking about students who had made such awesome achievements, I heard a name of one of my third graders from my very first year of teaching, Sophia Borgstall, mentioned. And so that was really exciting to hear. That's one of the things that I love about teaching in Silver Falls is you, you do kind of get to keep up with the kids as they, as they get older and as they go on to high school. So that was really exciting. I'm going to send her an email just to congratulate her. But the other, the other thing that was pretty exciting that I got to participate in a little bit today is was announcing some of the educators of the year for this year. So SFEA asks for nominations each year and it doesn't have to just be from, from teaching colleagues. It can be from anybody who works in the district. And so teachers from all over the district are nominated for four different categories. We've got the primary educator of the year, which is a teacher with, a teacher or, or specialist. It doesn't just have to be a classroom teacher. It could be a counselor, could be, you know, a behavior specialist or anybody who works with kids and is a licensed staff member. And so we have our K2 educator of the year, our intermediate 3-5 educator of the year, middle school educator of the year and high school educator of the year. And so Dan and I got to surprise my friend and colleague this morning, Katie Ross, who was the middle school educator of the year. She wasn't quite sure what was going on because she came into the, into the gym and it was pitch black and we started playing music and somebody shot off like a confetti popper thing and the lights were still off. So she had a little bit of a panic moment, but we had a really, really fun time surprising her this morning. And then Dan and Tina Howell, who's our rep at Mark Twain, got to announce the primary educator of the year. And that was Donna Becker, who is a second grade teacher at Mark Twain. So that was, that was an exciting announcement that they got to make. And then this afternoon, Dan and Frank Patrick got to announce that Kevin Ortega was the, the high school educator of the year. I'm not going to tell you who our intermediate educator of the year is yet because we're making that announcement tomorrow morning. First thing, but we will, we'll let you know after, after that announcement is made, just so that person is still surprised. So that has been just a really, a really fun thing, you know, about kind of this time of year is, is reflecting on the good work that people have been doing and, and just getting to celebrate some of those things. Um, another thing that we have coming up soon are Um, another thing that we have coming up soon are, it's very relevant to you all, is our school board candidate forum that SFEA hosts each time there's a school board election or we have in, in the recent years. So that's going to be coming up on April 22nd in the evening at 7:00 PM. And of course, all of you who are not participating, Jennifer, the rest of you are definitely welcome to log in and, and hear from the candidates so that you can kind of, you know, get a, get some, yeah, get some insight on the folks who, who are running to be the next people to sit on this board. And so that, that will be happening next Thursday evening. And we have invited our SFEA members as well as community members to submit questions for those individuals to, to answer during the forum. And so we're very excited to, to hear from those candidates, just, you know, about what, what being on the school board, you know, means, means for them and, and what, just kind of what they're passionate about. And yeah, so that'll be, and that'll be a fun event next week to log in. I think that we will also be recording it. So if you aren't able to, to log in live, we should have a link for people to, to be able to catch that later. Um, let's see. So as always, life is full of interesting, interesting experiences, right? And this year, as we all know, is full of many, many challenges, most of which we as, as a group have been able to work through pretty well. But we've kind of arrived at a place where the, the need for official policies and, and and, and practices between union and district relationships are necessary. So I just kind of wanted to give you all a little bit of a heads up that you're going to be hearing from some teachers during the public comment section of this meeting. Just about a challenge that we have been experiencing that, you know, there's always going to be times where the perspective of the teachers in the union is going to look a little different from the perspective of, of district leadership. And so I just wanted to let you guys know that we've arrived at one of those places and we have official policies for that exact reason and for those very circumstances. So we get to test those out. But just so you know, the, the conversations are still amenable. You know, we're, we're still working through many things together and, and that is our intent to continue throughout, you know, throughout this process and also as other challenges arise throughout the rest of the year. So I'm not going to go into really any more depth than that, other than just to kind of give you a heads up that you'll, you'll be hearing from some teachers who are impacted tonight during public comment. And if you have any questions, you know, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions, but that maybe, maybe to be less vague, we, we're going to have some, some teachers who are expressing concern with the Robert Frost, Mark Twain teacher assignments. And so that's, there we go, that's, that's less vague. But I would like for you to hear that directly from them. So, um, any questions for me?
No, then for me, I'm not seeing anybody else sort of raising their hand or indicating otherwise, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Have a good night.
Yes, you too.
Right. Well, next up we have OSEA with our other Michelle. I think she's on, I think I saw that you were on.
Debbie, did you get an email saying she was actually going to speak?
I did not.
Okay. Michelle said that she was gonna, she didn't have anything to say. So.
All right. Well, that brings us to our first public comment. And so Maddie, you were going to pop up the instructions. We are going to extend the options for contacting us requesting the ability to address the board beyond the, the email that we've been doing. We're also going to open up the chat window briefly so that you have the option of indicating through chat that you would like to speak as well. So to request to speak, post your first and last name into the chat box. For example, John Smith, or you can do like we've always done, which is to email Debbie, at ballack underscore Debbie at silverfalls.k12.org. Your comments, please not in the chat box, just your name, that'd be appreciated.
And we have, yeah, okay, I'm unmuted. We have a few so far, Jonathan. Would you like to get started right away?
Yeah, I think if we have some already queued up, we can certainly get started and then you'll just have to keep us posted as the queue runs.
All right, great. First up is Amy Amano.
Jonathan, do you need to read the statement?
Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, I think I should. So, okay, we are glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or compliments. Remember that we all model the way our students, the way for our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in respect. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, we will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. And there is a second public comment later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items.
I did.
Real quickly regarding the 30-second warning.
I'm going to give, yeah, I'm going to give a verbal 30-second warning and then I'll say time. Thank you.
Okay. I saw that Shelley Nealon had her hand up before I was about to come on.
Right. I, I'm sorry, it's delaying. Sorry, Jonathan. Yeah, I just had a process question. So I'm glad you read, I was trying to stop you to read the, the public comment document. But the, to request to speak, post your first and last name to the chat box, that's a new process that we have. Is that, um, I, I didn't know that we were doing that. And on my screen, I have that right in my face. All the rest of you are really small. If we could take that down so I can see the speakers, that would be great.
So that's just a Zoom setting.
Absolutely. I can, I can stop sharing that.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah, because I'd like to see the speakers, if they're going to be speaking. Oh, there we go. Okay. Um, yes, okay. Thank you. I just had to get that cleared up.
Okay. Well, I'm Amy Amano and I'm from Robert Frost. I'm the librarian there. I will be librarian at two schools for next year, for Robert Frost and for Mark Twain, which I think is going to be an extra challenge because of needing that extra time with little kids and extra time to, to get things going for K5. But besides that, Robert Frost has been a really great school for relationships and for teams and has had really high morale. And what happened after we learned where, where different people were being placed, a lot of times moving to a drastically different grade level. It just has felt like a death. It's that people are really stunned. So even those who are happy enough with their placement are having sort of a survivor's guilt and just, it's just really been a process that we didn't expect at all. We expected things to move, you know, within our grade levels somewhat, that maybe you'd have to, you know, stay in fourth grade but move to the other school or something. But we've had many, many teachers that are moved to something that's completely different and it made them feel devalued and like a cog in a machine or those kinds of things. So we just, we want people to know that we're hoping, we're still hopeful that there can be some resolution to this, but that, you know, there, the words that I've heard are hurt, depressed, devalued, anxious, still trying to function as we finish out this year. And that's on top of all the other challenges that we've been facing. So for the benefit of students, what we, what we're concerned about is that we need experts on the ground when kids come back. And that many people feel that the time that it's going to take to become an expert, first grade teacher or third grade teacher or whatever, when they've never taught that before, is going to be time lost for our kids. So those are just a few of the, of the thoughts swirling around at our school and the things that I'm really concerned about because of the compassion I feel and the pride I feel 30 seconds. for, for educators. The people that I teach with, my colleagues are amazing. And it's not that they can't move to another grade level, but it's going to be rough. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Okay, next up we got Michelle Clume or Clum. I don't know how to pronounce that. Um, sorry. There we go. She's coming in now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, awesome. I am just wanting to talk to you a little bit about what Amy was talking about and the effects that this recent change has had on some of the staff at Robert Frost and me in particular. So for the past six years, I've been happily teaching third grade. And in this last year, what's, you know, it's been a tough year, but what's really gotten me through is knowing what I'm doing, knowing third grade, knowing the standards so well that I can make adjustments where I need to. And my love for teaching third grade and my love for these kids, my relationship with these kids. The reason I was able to kind of bounce back and be the support for, you know, 25 third graders is because I felt confident, I felt secure, I felt supported, and I had my tribe around me. So even when things, you know, were hard, I really did feel that support and I've been fine. I feel like I've, I've kind of weathered this pretty well. Until I received my teaching assignment, I indicated on my survey that I wanted to teach third grade, either at Mark Twain or at Robert Frost, knowing that, you know, obviously there might need to be some adjustments. But when I, when I received the assignment and I was teaching first grade at Mark Twain, that's multiple grade levels below what I'm teaching now. And it really just pulled the rug underneath from, I mean, I just, I was devastated instantly. And it just knocked that confidence that I feel that I was telling you was getting me through for the past, you know, year through all of this adversity. It just kind of knocked me on my, on my butt. And I have felt, I don't know, just disrespected, devalued, just like, kind of a way I've never felt before with the whole process. So the time that it takes you to develop that kind of strength as a teacher, the, the energy, the heart and soul, the hours reading literature for the grade level.
30 seconds.
Okay. Um, I just, what our students really need is happy teachers. Happy teachers teaching a grade that they understand, that they know so well. They know the, the standards and can tweak it and can produce engaging assignments. So I just want to say how important that is. It's just super important. So thank you for listening.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Next up, we have Tina Howell. Coming in now.
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. I'm first going to ask if I can have five minutes because I'm representing nine teachers with what I have to say tonight. Is that possible? Okay, thank you. I'm going to be reading statements that each teacher submitted to me, the ones that wanted to speak. So my name is Tina Howell. I'm the ELD teacher at Mark Twain and I'm also one of the union reps. And so it's been very emotional and hard to watch the lack of transparency and the decision to place 50% of next year's Mark Twain teachers into positions that are two or three grade levels above their current grade level. It has hurt our staff and our, our school climate. My hope is just to bring awareness to this so that you all understand what we're going through. So my first statement is from Carolyn Jones, our school counselor. She said, "Before the recent rollout of the staffing list for Robert Frost and Mark Twain, teachers were asked their preferences for grade level building and teaching partner. However, when the list was made public, a great percentage of the teachers' preferences were not honored. And in fact, their assignments to teach two or three grade levels above their current level has created unnecessary angst, frustration, stress and trauma. Also, trust has been broken on so many levels. This is heartbreaking because it was totally unnecessary and could have been handled so differently with a positive outcome for both buildings and for the children who will attend these schools." From Brianna Davis, our kindergarten teacher and a recent teacher of the year. "None of the requests on my survey were honored. I asked to go to Robert Frost to stay in kindergarten and to stay with my teaching partner. Instead, I was moved to second grade at Mark Twain. This makes me feel unvalued. I was told that we were split from teams to get us out of our comfort zones. But that's where we've been this entire year. Being in a new building with new staff would have done that even without moving me to a new grade level, two years above where I currently teach. My heart is in kindergarten. I'm not just a teacher, I am a kindergarten teacher. And I take pride in that. If for some reason my heart changes, it should be my choice to switch grades. Like all parents of students in this district, we want our children to be in a classroom with a teacher who is confident and competent at their grade level, especially after a year of struggling in online school." Preston Ward, a current first grade teacher, was placed at third grade. And he says, "Students need a teacher who is both passionate and knowledgeable about what they are teaching. This will be even more true after two school years of distance learning. Students in the coming school year and beyond need a teacher who is a master of their craft to support and raise up those in our community who are struggling. This is our goal. Arbitrarily shifting teachers around to areas that are completely unfamiliar accomplishes the opposite of that goal." Donna Becker, a second grade teacher who is today announced as teacher of the year, was moved to fifth grade. She's never taught anything above second grade. She said, "I've been teaching in Silverton for 12 years. Eight of those have been in second grade. I feel that I'm very effective in second grade. I've been placed in fifth for next year. I do not want to be. I do not feel confident or competent, which makes me less effective. Next year, students need a very effective teacher to find and fill in the gaps. I need to be in a grade that I know inside and out. For me, that is second grade. We've been told that these placements were made to create effective teams and those are not." Nicole Gueyer, second grade teacher, is placed into fourth grade. She said, "I was placed at fourth grade for next year. I am currently the only bilingual teacher." I am currently the only bilingual teacher on our staff and I use my Spanish with students all day long to clarify directions and provide support. By the time students reach fourth grade, they don't need as much Spanish support in the classroom. It doesn't make sense to move me to a grade where my skills are not utilized as they have been for the past nine years. Providing language support in primary language and making connections lessens student anxiety and frustration. I work directly with her every single day as the ELD teacher and I totally agree how important it is to keep her at second grade. Next is from Brooke Anderson, who teaches kindergarten. She said, the idea that Mark Twain and Robert Frost would become two K five schools is nothing new. We had heard about this potential change years ago. Although it was a hard pill to swallow, knowing that each building's staff would be split up, we all knew it had to be done because that is what was best for kids. After seeing the teaching assignments for each building, it does not appear teachers were placed into grade levels, teams and buildings with that mentality. It takes many years to establish yourself within a specific grade level. I know that I taught third grade for 14 years and it takes a long time to become an expert. The new teaching assignments are putting an incredible amount of teachers in situations that are completely new to them. How can we create two highly effective K five buildings when the majority of the teachers are placed?
Thirty seconds.
And grade levels that they don't have any way to navigate. By not putting our teachers first, we did not put our kids first. The kids are the reason why we do what we do. It's time for us to do what's best for kids and give them highly effective teachers at each grade level. We just want it to be made right. I know my time is up, but this is a great place to work. Our teachers love being in Silverton and we just want to teach the grade level where we have passion and expertise and love. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up is Carrie Sorry, I don't know how to pronounce her last name.
Can everyone hear me?
Hi, Carrie.
Hi. Um, so I hope that this is the right time. I am actually a parent of a Mark Twain and a Robert Frost student. So is now the time for me to speak or, okay, I just wanted to make sure. So I just wanted to come on. I actually had sent an email probably to some of you or most of you. So my plan, I guess, is to kind of just speak on that. Again, I don't know if all of you received it. And if you did, I'm sorry if I'm repeating. But I just wanted to speak as a parent of both a Mark Twain and Robert Frost student that I was aware of the of the split of the two schools. And when I had heard that teachers were assigned different grade levels, it broke my heart. I feel like the teachers are in the grades that they are for a reason. That's their passion. They're really good at it. And so for them to then be moved two to three grade levels just just really hurt me. And I don't think we would expect any of our kids to do that. We wouldn't ask a second grader to just skip all the other grades and go to fourth or fifth grade. So I guess I just am kind of unsure of why we would ask teachers to do that, especially in a year that we've already had or a year and a half of COVID and them teaching, you know, kind of virtually and in this new new realm. I know a lot of them for their heart and souls, not only into teaching and to the kids, but also their classroom and spend a lot of their own personal money to get, you know, different learning tools and supplies to help all these kids and make them succeed. And obviously, if you're a kindergartner teacher, you have all that. You you can't take that to third or fourth grade. It's going to be irrelevant at that point. Our teachers are role models for the kids and I just, I want to go back. I think Ed John had said this, if I heard him right, he mentioned something about that this is a really good school district. People want to be here. They want to come here. And it just, it feels like, you know, if we do this switch with all of the parent or excuse me, all of the teachers, that's just gonna kind of rock the world. And I'm afraid that it's just gonna kind of turn it upside down and that won't be the case. So I just kind of wanted to to say that and would love for something to be reconsidered. I understand some some movement, but not not more than 50% of the teachers to be moved like they were. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
All right, next up is Erin Scott.
Hi, I just wanted to make one other, my Tina ran out of time, so she didn't get to mention what I said, but I had a little bit of a different perspective that I just wanted to share with you. As a teacher who is fortunately able to stay in my own grade, I teach kindergarten at Mark Twain. I am being moved to Robert Frost, which was not my choice, but that's what's happening. I'm still deeply saddened and disappointed in the lack of transparency, trust and respect our district has shown the teachers in this process. That does not create a healthy environment for teachers to thrive. And the point that I wanted to make, though, that hasn't really been mentioned, is that many of us who live in town will have kids that will go to either Mark Twain or Robert Frost. And in our building alone, one of those teachers is now placed at the school where her kids will, where her kids will go. So it's frustrating that due to a board policy, our children are not guaranteed to be able to move with us, especially when this decision was made for for us and not with us. So I would just like that taken into consideration. I live in Mark Twain. My daughter goes, should go to Mark Twain. Now I am being moved to Robert Frost. And I believe that just for the respect of the teachers and the staff, that if we choose to take our kid, kids to the school that we are assigned to, I believe that that should happen and priority should be given to staff members, especially since many of these were not, this was not my decision. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Melissa Briggs.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I just wanted to say that I was a member of the original work group that of community members that got together to decide whether or not Mark Twain or Robert Frost should transition to K fives. And we looked at all of the positives and negatives in that. And we immediately knew that this was a big positive for the kids. But we also immediately knew that it was a potential big negative for the teachers and the staff. And this, that work group, I think, met two years ago. And we specifically made a point to make sure that we we recommended to the board, I actually came to you, the board, I think, two years ago with Superintendent Belando at the time and was part of that recommendation to the board to start the transition. And one of the recommendations that we specifically made was to make sure there was a plan to support teachers. And I would just really encourage the board and the administration to rethink this and rethink a way that we can support teachers during this time and during this transition, because that was the intent all along. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
And we don't have anyone else.
Okay, well, very good. Appreciate all the input, everybody.
I just closed chat, so we won't get anyone else.
Okay, thanks, Maddie. Appreciate it. So next up, we have our administrator and staff reports, and that's going to begin with our superintendent, Scott.
Thanks, Jonathan. Good evening. First off, I just wanted to say thank you to those teachers who just shared. I think that was very thoughtfully done. And I know you spent a fair amount of time putting together your thoughts and putting together the thoughts of your colleagues. And and I just want you to know that 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 I hear you and and, you know, just want you to know that as we work towards solutions in this, just need you to know that we are addressing those on an individual basis. And our hope is that we come out of this with with a solution that's that's strong and that works for for as many as we can. So I just wanted to make sure that I I I paid attention, paid those comments, the attention that they deserve and out of respect for the teachers that shared and and the time it took to to formulate your thoughts. So, thank you. I just have a couple of updates. Number one is we just concluded our hiring of three instructional leaders. Two of them, you already know, we have Sione Thompson, who will be the next principal of Silverton High School. We have Mandy Pack, the next principal of Robert Frost. And the third one, I can't say publicly yet because we're dotting some i's and crossing some t's, but I will tell you that the person had the weekend to think about it. And of course, I was on pins and needles, but I received a call at around 10 o'clock this morning and I almost had tears in my eyes, to be honest with you. Because it's the end of a very long process. This process started back in October, believe it or not, with our recruiting efforts to assemble candidate pools for each one and to take feedback and to build a process that would that would give us an instructional leader on the other end. And it was really great to have the community's involvement and the staff's involvement. It was a truly inclusive process and I couldn't be happier with the three, three instructional leader additions that we have for the Silver Falls School District and and they are all top notch professionals and we can't wait for them to get started. Sione will be starting early, just so you know, he'll be starting probably around mid-May. He will be meeting with stakeholder groups and sort of formulating his, his, the connections that he makes and getting an idea of of what Silverton High School needs and so he will be doing that. Ed John will continue with the day to day operations for the end of the school year. And that'll enable Sione to really focus on building relationships and and kind of getting a lay of the land. And he's super excited. I think he might even be here tonight. Sione, if you're here, welcome. And in terms of the the other two, we're in contact with them as we speak and we are setting up the the supports that they'll need to transition. And just need to keep in mind that they have their current jobs to finish up and and we would expect nothing less than their best for the districts that they serve. And but they're super excited as well. One of the things that's taking up the most of our time right now is the new guidance from ODE, which has taken the six feet social distancing down to three feet. But the six feet social distancing requirement is still there for lunch. So that poses an enormous issue for us to tackle and we're working with that right now. Right now, we're working with principals to ascertain the square footage and the capacity of each building. And then figure out figuring out all the ancillary things. Most important one is transportation. All of you saw my, my communication, which was a joint statement from Kyle Palmer, our mayor, myself and Stacy Palmer, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. Just informing our community that we really need help. This is a nationwide problem that we're facing. And it won't end this spring. It will carry on through the summer. It will carry on to the fall until we hired enough drivers to effectively service our community. And and just so we're clear, school board, we have a legal obligation to provide transportation to every child that needs it. And so that's a legal obligation. It's every child's civil right to be able to have transportation for free to school each day. And and we're really working hard to solve this issue. With the three feet, if we're able to accommodate more students in the building, we will. And we will do that. And we should know soon. So our community should be on the lookout for a communication from me on the next week or so. Once we've determined, one, if it's possible, we think that the chances are are looking pretty good. Whether or not we can do it in every single building, we're figuring that out now. We've also had, since the joint statement ran, 12 individuals have contacted Kevin Palmer, who's our administrator for transportation. And he's working hard to accelerate the process for getting them trained, getting them licensed and up to speed, background checked and everything else. So just know it's a whirlwind pace right now. Durham is in a really good spot. Leadership is looking good and we've had multiple meetings with them. Kevin will still remain as our go to person, the one making the ultimate decisions as per our agreement with with the parent company of transportation and and that seems to, it looks like it's a really great collaboration between the two, to be honest. So it's it's really great to see. So just know more updates are coming for that. And I, the golden number for for drivers is 10. I'm not sure if I just mentioned that. So 10 fully licensed, background checked, ready to go. That's how many we need to double our capacity to start bringing in kids on more days of the week. So it would go from two days a week to four days a week. Again, we have not, I want to be really clear with this because I'm not saying, I won't say anything that isn't 100% true because this is a this is a publicly attended meeting and I want to make sure we're being very clear. I will communicate out in the next week or so an exact date, if that's possible. So all of those details will be spelled out explicitly for our community as well. Just so you know, with the nationwide shortage of drivers, we're competing against a couple of different things. One big one is is the packages that Amazon and other companies are putting together to lure drivers, commercial drivers for their companies. And so, you know, it's kind of hard to compete with with a signing bonus that's two to three times the size of the one that we're offering and a higher hourly wage and and better benefits. That's what we're competing against. Just to give you a frame of reference, right next door with Salem Kaiser, they are, they are short 53 routes right now. 53 routes. That is a lot. And so a few times, you know, they're about, I think, 10 to 12 times the size of of Silver Falls, I believe. So if you multiply that out or divide, in our case, that'd give you about the shortage that we have. So it's pretty much the same across the board. It's not just an issue with Oregon either. So we're pulling out all the stops to to do what we need to do because again, I'm not as concerned right now in the spring as I will be for the fall. We've got to solve this before we roll into summer. And so I would just encourage our public that's watching, we have 97 participants on the call, at least that's what the number says. I would really encourage you to contact Kevin Palmer, principal at Butte Creek, who's also our administrator for transportation. If you or you know someone who might be interested in learning more about driving a bus for our school district. And having said that, I told our staff who come to my open forum every Thursday, 3:30, that once we do come up with a date, assuming everything is possible and we're able to do that, that we will give teachers enough time to plan as well. And so it won't be an overnight thing. We're starting, you know, tomorrow or the day after tomorrow. It will be a reasonable amount of time for our staff to prepare for that as well. And so if you look at today versus when the end of the year is coming, that decision needs to be made really soon. So those are my updates. The last one I wanted to mention is about budget and I'm sure all of you have seen the co-chair's budget at 9.1 billion. We were hoping for 9.3 billion. And just so you know, as a frame of reference, every point one, every tenth of a billion dollars means $300,000 for Silver Falls. So that's a $600,000 shortfall for us right now. We we feel that 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 number will go up to 9.3. Do we have any facts to base that on? No. All we have is the trend of what our experience has taught us in Oregon, and that is most of the time it's ended back up where where we thought it might be. And and I don't think there might be one year in the 15 years I've been in Oregon where that wasn't the case. So we're hopeful as well. But just keep in mind that we're starting that budget season. But just keep in mind that uh we're starting that budget season. Uh, Steve Nielsen is hard at work preparing uh a lot of the uh different budget pieces that are going to be shared with our budget committee and we start meeting with uh, we meet with our new members this week. And um, going into a really important time. So thank you all.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Hey Scott, I have a couple of questions for you just from your presentation.
Sure, Shelley.
Hey, really quick, you mentioned that uh Kevin Palmer had potentially twelve applicants to be bus drivers. Um, and he's expediting um the process to get them certified. Um, and our magic number is ten, correct?
Yes, uh, I
Spring?
What, yes, Kevin just texted me uh about half an hour ago, said thirteen actually. So that's one more than than I had in my notes.
Okay, so is that for the spring only? Or what are you looking for for the fall?
Yeah.
And what does that do with routes?
Sure, we have to kind of take that with a grain of salt right now because it's the people that are interested. What we need is is ten folks that are fully trained, certified, ready to go. So had a chance to vet them since we just sent out the communication on Friday, but that's encouraging that we now have thirteen. Yeah.
I could just add to that, Scott. It takes, it takes a good couple of weeks to get everybody trained, go through the process to get their CDL and do everything that that needs to be done. So there are some signing bonuses based on who comes in with what, if they have a CDL already in hand and and are quicker to go. There's a little bit higher signing bonus and that's from Durham, by the way. And so uh Kevin has just taken it on with the Durham, Durham has their own recruiting team. We're just using kind of the Palmer name recognition of getting people locally enthused about this. And so that was really credit Kevin's connections with with Kyle to get some local folks in here. So Durham will need to take over the hiring of those folks and and vet them through training.
Oh, okay. So what about the previous bus bus drivers before the pandemic? Who were, who were those folks that maybe might want to come back?
They have, that we have gotten a few of those drivers back. So we have worked on that. Um, you know, the difficulty has been um, you know, there's a very aging bus. I mean, I had multiple bus drivers over the age of seventy that with COVID to come back. And so it's a very
Right.
your um heavy uh workforce. And so some of them did not want to come back. Um, Durham is working, Durham not only did the signing bonuses, but they also um did some retaining bonuses for people that are current drivers to keep current drivers. Cause again, we've got Malala offering multiple, you know, large bonuses. We're really in competition with a lot of neighboring districts over this issue. So it's, it's a really a game of not only recruiting, but also retaining.
More kids come back into hybrid, the more drivers that'll take also. So
Yeah, we were a little, we were a little fortunate in that we were a little ahead of the game with high school. And so I think that we were able to, because Durham has brought in out-of-state drivers to cover the shortfall. But now that California is starting to open back up, our ability to get out-of-state drivers is, you know, that's not a sustainable solution. So if we can get some of these local drivers and local people that are interested, train so that if if that out-of-state uh pool starts to dwindle, we hopefully, you know, have some backup. And like Scott said, then the long-term solution of being ready in in um in the fall. Yeah. And I will say, like Scott said, the the attention we're getting from Durham, it feels better than it was a couple of months ago.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Shelley.
All right, well, appreciated. Any other questions for Scott?
Thank you.
Moving to our financial report, Steve.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, everybody. I had a few items tonight and the for the first action, or the first item I have is an action item actually and uh there's a two and a half page executive summary. It has to do with uh an RFP process that we did over about a three, it was about a three or four month period, including the planning that went into it and actually longer than that in terms of um getting ready for it. But it basically was a three, a three-part process uh to uh put out a uh an RFP for copier, print managed, print printers and print management and device management. Those are the three different sections. Copiers are referred to as multifunction devices these days. And uh, the the goal would be to continue the trend of reducing printing costs in the district as well as getting standardization throughout the district that we don't currently have. We have about three or four different brands and service providers in the district at the various schools uh in the district. And so it's been something that we've uh had a goal of doing uh for for a while now and and we we were able to get leases to line up to where a lot of them are ending this year and into next year. And we'll actually also have some early lease buyout options so we can get uh most of these standardized here within the next year. So so we're really excited about that. I know technology is very excited. Brett's uh Brett and Vassili were working very closely with us on this because these days uh these devices, both uh network printers and uh multifunction devices are as much technology uh driven as as anything in terms of uh how they uh behave on the network and how the printer drivers work and that's that type of thing. So we uh let let tech have a a big say in in how uh how this, what 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 the needs are in terms of making it easier, easier for them to service. So with that being said, we we work with Optimize On out of Boise, Idaho. They do independent print management uh service and help run this process for us. And uh, we had five companies bid in these three different areas. Uh seventeen companies expressed interest. And so we had a pretty good pool. And ultimately, we did a waiting scoring, a weighted scoring method, and this document does a really good job of explaining the two different rounds that we had and we even conducted interviews for finalists, just like we would for uh employee job interview. And you can see on uh page three uh what the weighted scores were and what our potential savings uh would be. So uh, what I'm uh, what our team is recommending to you this evening is to award this uh five-year year contract in each uh for all three phases to Pacific Office Automation, specifically with uh Sharp Multifunction Devices. And as for the printers, we already have a number of network printers throughout the district that they will help uh provide service and supplies on in conjunction with technology. And also help with our device management to help us manage those, get the buildings all to have the same um goals in terms of the usage, how they use, when to print, uh, when to scan. We're also getting rid of more of the uh, the desktop printers wherever we can. That's another thing that we've been doing and we'll do more of where we can. So uh, the recommendation tonight uh is to award the contract to Pacific Office Automation. Any specific questions on that, since it's a, an action item? Okay, thank you for your consideration on that. The next topic is uh this, the the regular financial statements uh for March. There's not much to talk about here in terms of the trends. Uh, the trends are the same as they have been uh that we've talked about the last uh several months. Really, the focus is more about the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two and the complexities that I think are as complex as any in my twenty years of of doing this. As Scott mentioned, the the co-chair's budget came out during spring break and came in at nine point one billion dollars, which was two hundred million dollars uh short uh, less than what we expected. It matched the governor's budget, nine point one. So as Scott mentioned, uh every hundred million dollars or point one, uh it it equates to three hundred and just over three hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue or less revenue in this case for Silver Falls uh next year at the forty-nine percent funding level. So that additional two hundred million would would make a significant difference for us. And I know there's a lot of uh advocacy going on in in Salem, or at least over the computer and uh COSA and and other uh agencies have had a a very good track record of of helping, you know, provide documentation with regards to what current sub service levels are. And nine point three is not even meeting current service level. So so the track record's good, there's no guarantees, but you know, it's still open for debate in Salem and we'll see how it turns out. Uh, so we're just, just gonna keep our eyes peeled and provide any information we can to help with the advocacy efforts that COSA does. So in OSBA. So the the thing that makes it so complex, obviously, is we just don't know exactly with our enrollment situation, uh, you know, down as much as ten percent this year. Uh, I can report that uh we had the second straight month of slight improvement. We are up a little bit. Uh, our low again was three thousand five hundred and forty back at the end of January and as of the, uh, as of today, we're at three thousand five hundred and seventy. So it's a very slight uh increase over the last two months. But at least it's trending in the right direction. We have kids back in the building, buildings. And uh, it's just, it's hard to forecast exactly what service model will be uh will be at for in 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 the fall and exactly what the return rate will be. And every school is a little bit different in their situation. So we'll be talking a lot about that uh through our budget committee meeting process. So that's just something that we just continue to keep an eye on. Uh, as a reminder, uh we, they passed the third round of stimulus dollars here uh was a little over a month ago or a month and a half ago. So uh, we haven't got the exact allocation on that, but it's our understanding that K-12 school districts in Oregon will receive over two times the amount of the SRT two funds. As a reminder, SRT two dollars specifically to Silver Falls School District is one million four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that can be used through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. They haven't given us a final answer yet, but ODE believes we'll be able to access SRT three dollars through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. If it does indeed come in at two point four times the amount, that's over three million dollars. Haven't received the official allocation sheets for those. That will include uh a weighted pass-through to charter schools as is as part of that funding as well. One thing we have heard with SRT three funds is that they are anticipating that a minimum of twenty percent of those dollars will need to be used for learning loss efforts for students. So that's one specific piece of guidance that has been added uh to the previous guidance for SRT two. I also believe, as I'm developing the proposed budget, because we're going into a forty-nine percent state school funding year and because we have an enrollment loss that will impact us financially next year. It's not impacting us this year, but next year. And not knowing exactly where we'll be with our service model and return rate, I believe that there's an argument to be made that some SRT two funds could be used as a shock absorber uh is for maintaining uh continuity and capacity in our system. Uh, even though there might be a few schools that have slightly lower uh student, uh teacher-student ratios, uh just because again, uh, some schools will probably come back full or close to full and others may not be quite to that point, but we really just don't know at this point. The one thing that we have been able to control in a decision that we made thirteen months ago, that I think has served us well, is ho- holding the line wherever we could on uh on teacher vacancies uh and not rehiring those as we went into the pandemic, as we went into an online model. And so there were some positions that weren't rehired as we went through the year that has saved us some more money this year that could help us resource-wise next year, but also has, you know, you know, a bias some time as to, you know, in terms of it, you know, as we learn more, you know, with with the funding level from the state and as time passes, uh, you know, there's always more information that comes our way. Uh, so there's a, there's a lot that changes between putting together a budget in February and March and April and the start of the school year. So that's something that I think could could help us, even though there's other uses as well, like the learning loss and you know, PPE, those types of things. Uh, there's going to be uh, you know, I think some different, different areas that the SRT dollars will be able to help us. It's really similar to what happened in during the Great Recession. Uh, we saw the cuts to the state budget for about two or three years straight. Every quarter, they were cutting how much uh uh per student, the 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 schools would get. But the federal ARE dollars came into play during that time and those were temporary, but they helped stabilize situations. And I think that's what these SRT dollars will help us do uh here over the next couple of years as well. I know that's a bit of a long story, but we'll hear a lot about this as we go through uh the budget. So with the budget process, because it's uh been a lot to try to uh navigate and because the co-chair's budget came out quite a bit later than normal, uh, we are proposing that we have the first budget committee meeting on Thursday, May sixth, rather than Thursday, April twenty-ninth. Uh, that will still also allow us to have our second meeting on May twentieth and third meeting on June second. So those two meeting dates would not change. Uh, let's see here. The next, next item I had was uh oh yes, the pension obligation bond. So we had our board work session on uh Monday, March twenty-second during spring break and Lauren did a great job of presenting and we had some good conversation around pension obligation bonds and that possibility. And tonight was going to be the night that I was going to bring forth a resolution uh for us to move forward with that, but it uh wasn't obligating us to it. We would still have a couple of months. However, the uh, the process has been delayed by one month. So if we do decide to uh to move forward, I would bring a resolution to you at the May board meeting and everything else would be pushed back a month. And again, we would have another couple of months beyond that before we would have to commit fully to it. Now, the reason that it got delayed was because on Monday, March twenty-ninth, PERS had their monthly uh board meeting and the actuary Milliman and the Oregon Investment Council came and recommended uh that the PERS board consider dropping their assumed earnings rate, which is seven point two percent. As you may recall, all of the Eco Northwest analyses were based on the seven point two percent assumed earnings rate and then a particular borrowing, particular borrowing rate scenarios. They believe that the uh assumed rate continues to to be too high. For history, PERS history buffs, you may remember it used to be eight percent back in the day. It's been seven point two for at least a few years. But they're, they're running some scenarios for just PERS in general at for for what the UAL would look like under a smaller assumed earnings rate at seven percent and six point eight percent. Uh, they even give an indication on slide one twenty-two of that meeting that it could be as low as six point one two percent. But I think they're looking at high sixes possibly to adjust it. And it's ultimately the PERS board's decision and they probably will not make a decision on that until July. So what does that do for this particular pension bond uh possibility, borrowing possibility? Well, two, there's two different, two different options. Uh, one is we wait until that process plays out and see if the PERS board changes their assumed earnings rate. Uh, and then the whole Eco Northwest study would have to be read done. Uh, and then go from there and then three or four months would have passed and who knows what would have happened to the borrowing rates. Or uh, Bond Council has stated that it's acceptable for Eco Northwest at a cost of six thousand dollars and there's, I think, fifteen districts interested, it'd be about four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars for each district to just update the study that they did with another scenario where the margins are tighter. Uh, even with a, with a lesser earnings rate or a higher borrowing rate or or both. So that we could get a a look at a tighter margin. And that would give the information we would need to, you know, to analyze and possibly make a decision. So if they did reduce the assumed, assumed earnings rate, it would cause the system unfunded liability to go up as well as future projected payroll rates. That's for everybody, whether we future projected payroll rates. That's for everybody, whether we we borrow or not. As far as the borrowing goes, nothing changes in terms of, you know, the schedules for assumed earnings rate, they could run those to make them look different, but really all this is based on is the actual earnings rate. You know, they can, they can assume whatever they want, so. So that's why a lot of districts, including ourselves, has decided, hey, we'll go ahead and pay that four hundred dollars for Eco Northwest to 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 run that additional scenario and add it on to the report they've already done so that we can keep a timeline going now and not wait that three or four months for the PERS board to make a decision on their assumed earnings rates, because we want to take advantage of the the rate window as it sits today. It still may not play out for us, but it's, it'll at least keep it moving. But they felt it prudent to to call a timeout, at least for this this three or four week window they need to take in this information, have Eco Northwest update the report, then we can come back to you, the board, and say, okay. Still looks okay, let's, let's consider passing the resolution and and move on from there. So that's why it got it got delayed. I know that's a lot of information, but it was a curve ball, no doubt, that that came up just as we were poised to move to the next steps, but better to know now than and 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 relook at the at the data and be able to make a decision based on the latest, you know, information, so. I think that's, I think that's all I had for tonight. I definitely entertain questions on any of that. I know that's a, the pension obligation bond is 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 tricky. Jennifer.
Let's go back to the last topic, the third stimulus work. You said that a percent was dedicated to learning loss on this new, the new one. Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't catch that number, can you?
The, the, in the meeting we had with O D E, a week before last, they said the the early indicator, indication is that at least twenty percent must be used for learning loss.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Jennifer, Shelley, sorry.
That's okay. Um, hey, just to, just if you could explain something in connection with the S R two money, the governor has requested the leaders of the Oregon House and Senate to, the legislature should allocate two hundred and fifty million in state funds and seventy five million from the federal government to fund the summer programming. So are those two separate funding?
Most of this, most of the state, so even before the S R three came out, I think there was discussion around the state funded summer program, yes. They, I would need to double check on this, this other piece that you said, but I know that part of this, the stimulus package is there was gear money, which was the governor's. There's S R and gear, gear was and and she had discretionary authority over a small pool of the stimula, of the stimulus funds and that might be part of that, might be going in to help increase the amount they have available for the state for the summer, summer funding that they had already allocated from the state. I'd have to double check on that, but but yeah, but most of the, most of the summer summer school funding, at least how they announced it early on, was was state level funding. They they very, very well may be adding some federal dollars to that, because that would make a lot of sense, because that would address learning loss and getting credit recovery, those types of things.
Yeah, and I think that that was the idea behind it, moving forward, but my other question is, well, and you might have to find this out too, is would part of that money be used to provide, you know, how many kids that need it in our district? You know, public transportation, lunches, breakfast, you know, all of that, does that come out of our general pool? Money or does that, would that potentially come out of those funds to cover that, so it wouldn't come out of our budget?
Well, generally, the, those great questions, the, the food generally is runs through the, you know, the National School Lunch reimbursement program. Arm and usually has a different, you know, funding stream. It's quite possible that some of those federal stimulus monies went went into there that, in this money that we're not even talking about, and I I I don't have those figures check on that, but yeah, in terms of, you know, you know, transfer, transportation, you know, that's already part of the state school fund, you know, we reimburse seventy percent of whatever we, you know, whatever we pay, but any additional costs related to to that, like, you know, the the net amount that we have to pay, if it means continuity of operations or 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 whatever it is we have to do to get more drivers to help Durham, you know, whatever, that could be something, you know, specifically the the S R two guidance, which I had here in front of me somewhere, I guess I don't have it here now, but continuity of operations and maintaining staffing levels and that that type of thing, so continuity of operations, I believe that would fall into that if we, if we needed some assistance, yes.
Okay, yeah, those are, I mean, just all the thought processes that all this money can go to and how that works, so. We don't have all the answers, it's just throwing questions out there to potentially think about is.
And they're still developing the S R three guidance. Finalizing that guidance and the and the allocation amounts. The S R two guidance became more expansive than in the first round and it's possible that S R three could be, there could be even a little to that as well than S R two, so.
Right, yeah, got it. Lots of information to come.
Lori, sorry, were you?
Oh, I was just kind of curious what, and it's probably too early to ask the question, but I too noticed the the twenty percent for learning loss, and what does that exactly look like? I mean, it goes into, I I guess I, I'm trying to figure out, you know, I I know that we're being funded for summer school, but I would imagine learning loss is at a, I don't know, and I'd probably have to ask Scott, is that like a specialized program? To utilize funds like that, or is it utilized maybe in other ways?
I think there would be a number of options and 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 I think, you know, Leslie might be able to 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 address it better than I could, but it could be, it could be an additional teaching resource or a tutor or a program or some online tools, it could be a myriad of things, I would say.
Oh, very good.
Help, help, help a student catch up, you know, if they they fell behind or they're, you know, fell behind the benchmark or just anything that they would need assistance with, it could mean, you know, some additional counseling for social, emotional, those types of things. I'm not a, I'm not an expert in these areas, but poppin' in my mind, so.
So, so Leslie, it's a very broad definition so far with.
That's our understanding is that it's going very broad so that we can choose to use the money in ways that are specific to our student population. So whether it's materials or or different types of employees or, you know, it's really seems broad. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you both.
Any other questions for Steve? Well, we do have an action item later on regarding the copier printer device management contractor work. Okay, well, with that, we are ready to move right into our discussion items. Couple of them here. First one is that this is when we are going to be talking about the resolution to adopt Teacher Appreciation Week and the resolution was attached. I am going to read it real quickly and then anybody would like to speak to it, of course, would be welcome to. So the resolution that we'll be having as an action item later in the meeting says, you know, that we are going to recognize, well, I'll just read it, whereas teachers that would be school counselors, specialists and all licensed instructional staff mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students in widely differing backgrounds and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers educating the children of this community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors proclaims May fourth through eighth, twenty twenty one, to be teacher appreciation. And be it further resolved that Silver Falls School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observance. Personally expressing, expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. So, I mean, anybody want to share anything or?
So I've been thinking about this, this is, I completed one full week of time with in-person learning back at the school that I teach in and it just brings to mind the importance of what schools and teachers do for our society, and so I just want to say, teachers, thank you, you are the the weavers connecting the threads that make up the fabric of our community, and I mean that with all sincerity. Life is beginning to perk up a bit for many people, including our students and families, and it's because of the work that you do.
Good, thank you.
I am, I just wanted to echo Jennifer, I fully support this, this is fantastic. I do have one technical question, because y'all just expect that from me. If it's supposed to be Monday through Friday, I think the dates are the third through the seventh. I might be, might be wrong, but again, doesn't reflect the substance of the, of the intention, so.
That would be correct.
Well, I know that from certainly my perspective, teachers that I know and the teachers that I love, this is, you know, always been 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 something that's important to me and my four kids growing, you know, them growing up and me growing up is all the impacts that teachers have had in my life and certainly in theirs, and I appreciate every, everything that you all do, so thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Jonathan, I'd like to say just a couple of things, just to to add to this. I I got to visit, I think it was about nine schools last week, and just a couple of things to to share, I'm I'm gonna miss it, you know, I saw a lot of different classrooms, but I'm gonna say a few things that stuck out to me when the first graders at Evergreen, when their teacher asked her to ask them to to smile and wave, I asked them, how can I tell that you're smiling underneath that mask? And they say, you can always see it in our eyes, Mr. Bush. And and that was really true, I could see it in their eyes, and then I was in Donna Becker's class last week and I learned what a fathom was, I never knew what a fathom was at six feet, I never knew that before, but her kids told me that. I got to visit Helen Plouffe out at Scott's Mills, I was warned if I ever come back, make sure I wear tennis shoes, because sure enough, I end up doing two laps around the gym in my dress shoes because I was forced to play a game in P E. And just across the board, got to go out and see P E classes at Butte Creek and and see kids doing, laying down and they had sculpted themselves, they're doing a human anatomy unit and I don't know what grade they were, second or third grade, that were doing a human anatomy unit and they were drawing on them, on on their sketches and everything, and so teachers do amazing things for our kids. And it was from, from, you know, kind of textbook learning anatomy to, you can see it in my eyes when I'm smiling. Our teachers do amazing things to connect with kids, so I'm excited that kids are back in school and excited for Teacher Appreciation Week in a few weeks.
I think this year's Teacher Appreciation Week is going to be exceptionally thankful after this year. It's been extraordinary, you know, the fires, pandemic, ice. I mean, it's, it's, there's, it's just has so much meaning this year and not that it didn't other years, but this was extra hard. And they had to put in some serious extra time and effort and you know, they showed their true master craft. That's what they do. And when you have a teacher that can show their craft at this level, it is appreciated beyond words. And as a parent and a former teacher, but as a parent of two kids at the high school, you know, it it just, the teachers that my kids have and and have had before are just amazing. And I'll be saying something during that week, for sure, to the teachers, so. But thank you, thank you, a million thank yous.
Okay, I think Sean will will address the the dates before we before it gets signed, so presume when it comes to adopting this, that we will have those dates fixed up. All right, anybody else?
Yes, I had the privilege of visiting several schools earlier. I I think it's been about six weeks with Janet and Scott. I know that teachers work hard. I know that they give so much, and this year they have gone above and beyond to keep that close connection with their students, and now as they are working back into the classroom, they're doing things that they were never, never dreamed or trained for, but they became trained so they could create a very safe nurturing environment for those students. And I can also say that although I sit in on communications with S F E A, what is curious about that, they may come in representing one organization, but they are teachers. They they get to change their jerseys sometimes when they, who, but their voice is always about the students and about the care, and I have witnessed that and I have seen that in the school district and it's it's a very beautiful thing to see. The care and the true pride and love that they have for those students and the magic that they create in their classroom. So thank you.
Jonathan, I just wanted to mention that, you know, in in visiting schools this past week, I, you know, the high school, I was there a few days ago. And, you know, there's so much you can tell about a school just within the first few minutes that you're there, and I was there during arrival time. And that just the feeling of sort of a quiet excitement was all over the high school, and I visited about ten classrooms, and what I appreciated most was each teacher was going through sort of what, what to expect, how to do certain things and so some really simple things, like how to fill out a hall pass, how to order your lunch, how to do these different types of things now that we're having to have all these safety precautions in place, and what I really appreciated was the care and gentleness that the teachers were presenting this to the students, it just felt really, really safe. And it just, it just really took me back to me wanting to be in the teachers' classes as well, so if you're out there watching and you were a teacher and I, at the high school and I walked into your classroom, just know that that's how I felt and and I really appreciate that from you.
Thanks, Ken. Right. Well, next up, we have our superintendent evaluations, so we did go through the process. Last time we got together and we had the O S Last time we got together and we had the OSBA representative, Kristen, who was able to help walk us through the process. But she, she took the, um, comments that we made in sort of real time, put together the, uh, comments and then put together a public statement afterwards, which is attached to board book in which we've, you've all seen. And I left it in draft form with the exception that we, you know, I think plugged in, uh, you know, Scott's name, but otherwise it's, it's essentially in draft form. And the, uh, the, the task for us is to go through and talk about it and see if we agree with where that's at. And ultimately it is an action item. And so the intent would be to, if we need to tweak it and then to subsequently vote on it later tonight. And this would be the official summary statement for Mr. Drew's evaluation. So I'll open that up to conversation. Uh, I will mention that there is one section that we're pretty sure we do need to tweak, which is the final statement, which talks about working with Superintendent Scott Drew over the next several weeks to develop goals for the superintendent aligned with the district. In speaking with Scott, he would much prefer that we modified that statement. He'd like to tackle that really starting in the summer, um, as opposed to over the next few weeks. And there's a lot of reasons for that, not the least of which is we're still in the middle to a great extent of dealing with ever-changing crises from, you know, changes in guidance from the E and, and we've got the busting shortage and we've got kids coming back to the building. So there's a lot of reasons he'd really like to sit on that for a little bit. So, um, I'll stop there and open it up to further discussion, feedback and comments from the rest of the board.
Jonathan, are we talking about the superintendent evaluation right now or the public, uh, statement? Which, which, which one?
Specifically, the public statement is the one that we will have an action item on.
That we're, so that's what we're talking about right now?
The one is just the data collected from our, our meeting the other night.
Oh, okay, okay. Is that, is that going to go into his file?
The
Into his professional file, the, um, the superintendent evaluation comments that she summarized for us?
The record, yeah. I think it is anyway. I guess that's a good question. I, maybe I don't really honestly know the answer to that. I know it's a public record and we did the whole thing in public. So it kind of is out there in perpetuity, but, but the, uh, as to whether it's in his record, I guess I, I'll have to follow up. I don't know the answer for sure.
Okay. I don't know, I, the, the, I just want to comment really quick on the superintendent evaluation, um, that she, she gave to us. Um, you know, that's, that's on board book. Um, you know, if this, I mean, if this is going into his file or, or whatnot, um, I don't know, I, it says Scott a lot in here, you know? He's our, he's our superintendent and I think that, you know, it's more professional in his professional, um, file to say, Mr. Drew. Um, I, you know, and that's really just a formality. Um, you know, he's not going to be our superintendent forever, but he could move on at some point or somewhere. Um, and if he has to present this to another employee, I just don't want it to be Scott. You know, I, I don't know, it's, I, I guess I have higher standards than just calling him Scott when it comes to his professional portfolio. So I, I would like for it to say, Mr. Drew. Um, and that's just a small thing, but I think it's important.
Yeah, I need to follow up on the whole question of, but my understanding is the action for us is to approve, formally approve the public statement. And I believe that is the summative result of this process. But Jennifer, I don't know if you've got a different impression or any, but I don't really, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I would agree that we're voting on the, the second document, the, the summary.
Okay, then why do we have the, the evaluation summary? The superintendent evaluation summary, are we supposed to look that over?
Transparency, I think, just that it was part of the process and it was never posted on board book previously.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And it's evidence for, that supports what we're voting on.
Oh, okay. Great.
I mean, that's just off, off the top of my head.
Okay.
Understanding too, Jennifer, right? I, so you, it was a little caught off guard with the question because I didn't think that there was any thing about that that went in his permanent record, but you made me kind of pause and say, well, I don't know, maybe there is. But I don't, I think the answer is we're voting specifically on the public statement. The public statement is the final result of the process that goes into the record.
Oh, okay, okay. I guess just having both documents, you know, presented to us, even though we're voting on one. I just read both of them, you know, made sure that they aligned with each other, but I wasn't really sure you know, what the superintendent evaluate, where that information was going, those, that detailed information. So I want to make sure that if it does, you know, go into his professional file and with our public statement attached to it, um, you know, that it's, it's correct. So that's, I just want to make sure that that's, that's what we're, you know. Can you ask her for, can you ask OSBA? Okay, that'd be great. Okay.
Newly action item and the only thing we're voting on is the public statement.
Right, okay. Okay, well, let me get to that.
Anybody else with any comments, any discussion item?
Yeah, Jonathan. Yeah, I, um, I think it looks fine and I'm for, I'm all in favor of, because things are so busy right now if to, you know, edit that final statement. Where it says, well, we will be working with Superintendent Scott Drew over the next several weeks. Let's, I'm for changing that to, uh, we will be working with Superintendent Scott Drew over the summer to develop goals for the superintendent. Yada, yada. That way, you know, they'll have, you know, he's, he's kind of busy right now. So I'm, 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 I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I am too. I don't have any issue with, yeah, with making that final sentence. Talking about it over the summer would be fine. I'd have been fine just changing the word weeks to months. I don't know, I, I'm pretty flexible on it. It's not binding exactly anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, the only, yeah, the only comment I have, which is, you know, if, if this was standing alone, I would say it wasn't sufficiently robust. In other words, it's very cut and dried and, and kind of clinical and it refers to obviously the standards that we evaluated and buy. But given what I really like though, is that it, it doesn't have any sort of subjective embellishment, one direction or the other. It's, it's, it's pretty objective. And that because we had that evaluation in a public meeting, we do have all of that background now as part of the public record that, um, gives the public an understanding of why why this summary is, is what it is and, and, and the evidence behind, um, these choices. So, um, yeah, I think, I think, I think this is a good balance of, um, short to the point satisfies what's needed. But we also know that we have evidence out there if people want to do, um, some more, you know, research or, or have a better understanding of how we came to these. So that's good. Thank you.
Well, what would folks think then if we took Tom's idea and changed it to over the summer? As the sort of lone change, I mean, I'm, I'm not looking for a vote here, but maybe some head nods or some head shaking if, if that would be a concern. Yeah, Jennifer.
Oh, nevermind. I, I think that, I'm just thinking about procedure, but head, my head's nodding.
Yeah, Shelley, did you have some?
I did, yeah, I was just going to respond to your, to your comment. Um, do we need to change the wording now in public? And then we vote on the new draft, take action on the new draft. So I think it would be important that we change the wording now. Yeah. And vote on the new draft. So we will be working with Superintendent Scott Drew over the summer, over the summer of 2021 to develop goals for the superintendent aligned. So really it's not that big of a change, but it's over summer of 2021.
I certainly
For the new fiscal year, I mean, it could be.
And, and a change is a change. Uh, I mean, and I think we should respect it as such. Um, so I would agree. Sounds good.
Jennifer.
Going back to my thought that I never minded, um, I think that Tom should just make his idea a motion. I think, and then we should vote on it. And then that makes it really clear. At least I think we should consider that. I don't know if that's absolutely right, but what, what, what if?
So he would have to do the specific language. He'd have to make a motion with specific language. Right. Tom, you want to do that?
Yeah, I'll do that. Yeah, I'll do that right now. Um, bring it up here. I moved that we edit the last state, the last sentence of the, of the, of the public evaluation statement to, to state that we will be working with Superintendent Scott Drew over the summer of 2021 to develop goals for the superintendent aligned with our district priorities and this evaluation.
We moved.
Second.
Moved in second. No further discussion. I'll just point out as a reminder, we're modifying the draft, but we will officially still adopt the action.
Right.
Okay.
Jonathan? Jonathan?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all in favor. And I want to verify that was Lori seconded.
Yes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. So unless there's anything further on the superintendent evaluation summary, we will move on to 11C. Everybody good with moving on? Okay. This one is a discussion item regarding the, uh, July regular board meeting. The date, uh, was originally July 12th. And I proposed that we move it out a week. There are at least two people who will be out of town, one being myself on, on that date. And in fact, had I had any other option, I would have been willing to to make some changes, but I will literally be in the air during that meeting. So, uh, moving it would be ideal for me. So I'm floating that idea and seeing if there is any, well, anybody who has any real hard conflict and/or if there are any objections to moving it out exactly.
Jonathan, is that the first meeting of the year?
Meeting after the election, that's the question. Yeah, the first official meeting with new board members.
So then the new elected board members won't be inducted until the 19th?
It would be until the 19th, yeah.
Is there a policy that we have or a law that they have to be inducted by a certain time?
Not aware of it. I know that, um, you know, we normally follow precedent regarding board meeting times, but they are clearly established by the chair. So that's sort of the policy as I understand. The, um, you know, my reaching out is because I want to make sure we're not, you know, creating a bigger problem than, than we would otherwise have.
Well, clearly I won't be here, but I just want to make sure that we don't have a policy. I'm not, I'm not aware, but I just want to make sure that we don't have a policy that states that we, you know, as a board or that as a board, you know, there needs to be, you know, induction of the new board members, you know, might want to take a look at that. So being on the policy committee, I can look that up, make sure.
I don't recall anything, but you're right. I mean, we should make sure that there's, that there's not something.
Yeah. Let's, let's confirm that. First. Is this an action item?
No.
Okay.
Discussion.
Oh, okay. That would be my thought process on that. So if you want, I, I can get back to you or I can bring it back to the board and see if we have a policy with it.
Yeah, no, that'd be appreciated. If there's anything, it'd be good.
Okay.
So it, we're looking at July 19th for our Okay, that was part of the proposal and then we would have our work session following the 26th. Okay, thank you. I was just asking to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, well, you can always email me if you realize that that date's horrible for some reason and we'll float other dates. But we'll, we'll get it figured out. Right, anything else before we move on? Right, 11D, the 2021, 22, uh, school year calendar. So this is an action item. And so we've got it as a discussion item in case anybody has any concerns about it.
So this is, this calendar is for a normal year, five days a week, right? Okay, I'm ready to vote on that.
Right, amend that. Regular year, let's just imagine one without, you know, fire and it's, that'd be great.
Let's just vote yes right now.
Okay, it sounds like nobody has any concerns or discussion. Yeah, Jennifer.
Um, can we get walked through the process that it, this draft took to get to us?
I think we can. I know, well, Scott, I'll, I'll ask you if you'd like to.
So, uh, Kevin Palmer, uh, helped facilitate this and we brought together, uh, representative group like we normally do each year and, and, um, I think the group was really thankful that we're planning a calendar for the, the next year that is quote unquote a, a normal calendar. So it was really collaborative and there are a couple of minor tweaks, but nothing major. You know, it actually went really smoothly.
What were the tweaks? I didn't see anything.
Leslie, help me out. Was it, there was an early release, uh, we, I don't know if there were some adjustments really minor adjustments there. And then, uh, for inclement weather days, I think was another one.
Oh, right, okay.
There had been a recommendation for a fourth. If you notice there, there's a first closure, second closure, third closure, there
Took out the
We had, there had been a fourth closure, we removed that one.
Okay.
Leslie, do we switch any dates around? Do we have to make any adjustments with early release? I can't remember off the top of my head.
We ended up not. We had talked about it previously, but, um, we went with the committee's recommendation.
Yeah. So very minor, minor tweaks.
Okay, well, I'm going to move us along then if there's no other discussion there. So we do have several policies that are up for second reading. Pretty late at the work session when we got to them. So this is a good opportunity for us if you have questions or discussion to go through them. So I'm going to go through them one at a time, make sure that if there's any conversation that we have an opportunity to have it. First one up is the bias incident complaint. That's E D A C B dash A R. Uh, it was recommended for fast grant or OSBA modifications that we have incorporated into our policy. Anybody have any questions or comments or concern? Anybody have any questions or comments or concern? Okay. Next up, B B A A. And this is the individual board member's authority and responsibilities. This one has also pretty minor edits. And it was an OSBA update. They last updated theirs in February 2019. I'm not going to read the summary statement. I presume you've all been able to to read it, but they were pretty minor in terms of the changes. No, okay. B B F. This is the policy for standards of conduct. It also was a 2019 OSBA update. And we've incorporated those. B B F C, reporting of suspected abuse. It's a new optional policy that is recommended by OSBA. Okay, the next two are both COVID-related leave modifications. One of them is being removed and one of them is being, actually, they're both being removed. That's on the list. Are we reading it? Yeah, both of them say that they're being removed, and that was per recommendation. Okay, and then the last two are criminal records related items here and these are predominantly just sort of district. Well, Dan, I don't know, Dan, if you have anything to add to these two. They're kind of way in the weeds about sort of hiring processes and stuff.
I'll just I'll just say, you know, there's been a lot of changes to the background checking of individuals, both to to tighten it up. It actually caught my attention just in relation to our bus driver conversation that we had at the work last work session. But there has been a lot of updating of who has to get fingerprinted in order to work with students. So this this language is in alignment with that with that new legislation.
Everybody good? All right.
Hey, Jonathan, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Can I can we go back quickly to B B A A, individual board members authority and responsibilities? Um, so the only the only question I have is under number one, it says request for information. Um, and it says a copy of the material may be made available to each member of the board. So if a board member requests information from Steve or from Scott, Dan, it says a copy of the material may be made available. Um, I don't have a problem with that. I just wonder whether we should check with OSBA, because in the past, they've said that board members should all receive the same information. And so I don't know if that's in conflict with either other policies we have or their recommendation. If it's just their recommendation, we can certainly choose to state it however we are comfortable stating it. And I don't necessarily, I mean, I guess, you know, at risk of everyone getting multiple copies of things that they are not particularly interested in receiving, you know, that's sort of the downside. And May does leave it open for someone to say, you know, hey, I'd like a copy of that. Okay, great. Thanks. You know, no problem. I just want to make sure that it doesn't conflict with anything that we've received explicit instruction on from from OSBA. I don't know if the policy group.
We can certainly, we can certainly check on that, Janet.
Okay.
If I had to guess, Janet, I would say that that probably that language is probably in there just to make the board member aware that you wanted a report that, you know, that it may go out that you asked for that report and it goes out to everybody. So just a more of a heads up that that request may not stay stay private, if that makes sense. That's what my
Oh, sure.
is. I don't think so. That that would be my best guess as to why that language is there. But I I would agree with Scott. We can check.
Yeah, no, that that makes sense because it's not. It, yeah, that that makes sense. I can see that interpretation of it. And and like I said, I'm not necessarily uncomfortable with the language. I just want to make sure it's consistent with what we're supposed to do, you know.
Yeah, Jonathan, I I it I think it's, I think May is there or Janet, it's just because of it's it's kind of a a judgment call. So say there's an agenda item, and I have a question, but I'm asking a question that's kind of a leading question. I'd like some information. Well, that's information that I want to ask. But if everybody, if the whole board saw me ask that question and the information came after it, that would be a discussion of of a of a that as, you know, we're we're discussing a an agenda item or something like that. Does that make sense? You know, if I if there's if there's an agenda item and 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 I've got questions about it, you know, and Scott gives me some information about it. Well, it's sometimes by asking a question, it can be interpreted as a as a discussion going on between the whole board. If the if the whole board saw me ask that question and the information that came from that question, that makes sense?
Right. And I think, you know, that's why we don't do our our reply halls, right? So yeah, that that makes sense to to avoid that.
But essentially, right, but it but essentially, if if we had to always give all the que information from a question to everybody, that's essentially reply all.
Hmm.
Is that, I don't know, maybe I'm being a little technical, but you know, maybe maybe check with OSBA.
Yeah, no, and and I only it's it's only because we've sort of been been lectured that a little bit by OSBI in this point.
Yeah.
You shouldn't.
Yes, I know.
Research, you know, don't go do your own independent research, because all the board members have to have exactly the same information that they're working with. And so that kind of sets up a little bit of an
Yes.
impossible situation right there. I don't even know how that's technically possible for all of us to work with identically the same information. So, um, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Anything else on the policies? All right. Well, next up is a oversight. It wasn't supposed to be on here, but I didn't catch it when we voted. So that's my bad. I didn't have any requests for a board report, so I'm not anticipating any. But since it's on the agenda, if anybody has a a report, it was an opportunity. Okay. Well, we do have a second public comment as well. So I think what we ought to do, Maddie, is toss back up the the option, well, the instructions for how somebody can speak. And as I said before, just to make it easier, we've opened up the chat as an option. People were having issues with email. So we went ahead and opened that up as a as a means of alerting us that you're interested in speaking.
And chat is open.
Thank you. We'll wait, you know, at least a minute here in case anybody wants to make sure that that they get their request. All right. Well, I'm not seeing any any chats firing. So Debbie, unless you're getting some emails, I think we may be free to move on.
I'm not receiving any emails. I'll close the chat.
Thank you. All right. Well, that moves us to our action items section, and we have a few. The first of which is to approve the resolution in appreciation of teacher appreciation week, which is we we realized was off by a day in the resolution. So we will modify that before it gets signed, but it'll be May 3rd through the 7th of this year. And at this point, I would accept the motion to adopt said resolution with the date change.
I move to approve a corrected version of the teacher appreciation week resolution.
I second it.
And seconded. Any further discussion? All right, let's call the vote, Debbie, please.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Erv?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
Right, and we have our superintendent evaluation public statement, which we did make a motion earlier in the meeting to change the final sentence to indicate the summer of 2021 instead of the next weeks regarding his goals.
I make a motion. Oh, you're ready for that? I make a motion to accept the amended superintendent evaluation summary.
So moved.
Second it.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? All right, we can call a vote, Debbie, please.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Erv?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
All right. Next up, we have our school year calendar for next year.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2021-22 school year calendar.
I'll second that.
Second it.
Great.
Double.
Any further discussion? All right.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
And Erv?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
And the last one, which is the contract award to Pacific Office Automation for copier and multi-function device management.
I move to approve the contract award to Pacific Office Automation for copier and D printers and device management.
I'll second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion?
Do we need to have the contract amount in there, Jennifer?
I do not know the answer to that question, Erv.
The contract amount, I think, was in the executive summary. I'm opening it up right now.
I just think for a public comment, we should have the contract amount is normal, but
Yeah, page three, 60-month cost for all assets, copier, software printers, device management, Five-year annual, five-year total projected savings of $183,810.
Very good. So it's been moved and seconded in. Actually, has it been seconded?
Yes, it was.
Was it? Thank you.
Shelley, I believe, did.
I popped open the document and then I realized I wasn't. So, okay, move the second in. Erv, that was good discussion. Any any other discussion regarding the contract? No, okay, with that, let's take the vote.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer? Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
And Erv?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
Okay, well, with that, we will move to item 15, future agenda item request. Opportunity to mention things that are on your mind that you may want to have thought about for future agendas. Yeah.
So I would like to request an agenda item to follow up on the public comment we had this evening regarding the grade changes for the teachers in the district. Um, I I I would just like a follow up on that as an agenda item. And see how that's going.
Right, thanks. I I wrote that.
Okay.
Yeah, Lori.
Yeah, and I I'll see how this works, but what was interesting is that we talked about the cost of the last motion. Is it? I know that we had a cost. I I guess I wonder about the transparency when we approve things. And I know that there was a cost with OSBA coming and being our third party for the evaluation, which went very well. I don't know. Is that something that we should share openly? I mean, as public comment, I mean, as public record in our, I don't know. I I'm just throwing it out there. You don't need to answer, but it was just something that crossed my mind. And I don't know. I I'm just thinking for the sake of transparency that might be just something we mentioned and then just move forward with what the, you know, our decision was. Yeah. With the evaluation. Did I make sense?
Yep, makes sense.
The one, okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to say on that one. But
Yeah. I was just gonna say, I know it's not the time to get into a discussion, but I did want to articulate my support of Lori's request in that I think it would be interesting to examine, you know, when the board spends money on board business.
Thank you.
That might be an appropriate appropriate thing to 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 make really transparent to to the public. So I think it's worth worthy of a discussion. Thank you.
I would agree. I would agree with that as well. I'd like to piggyback on that as well for that request.
Right, well, I'll throw one out too. It's been brought up a couple of times with people that I've talked to about if the board was going to consider moving back to in-person meetings at any point with the school buildings opening back up and kids returning to the classroom. And so I think it would probably be wise if at some point in a near-term meeting, we at least talk about what that might look like in the pros and cons. Okay, anything else? All right. Well, that is going to move us into executive session. We will be leaving here shortly to move into executive session specifically to discuss. When we do so, our When we do so, our Zoom webinar will remain open. Anybody who. You know, wishes to wait for us to return, we will return back to open session in consideration of those requests that were. Anticipate about fifteen minutes executive session. So with that, um, I'm going to officially move us into executive session. And as a reminder to board, you need to leave your. Zoom webinar and rejoin the other meeting that Debbie sent.
And Jonathan, do you have to?
Making sure I covered everything else first. So, uh, we are going to move into executive session, your Q R S one nine two six six zero. To app to consider information on records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Specifically, this is a sick leave bank.
Good, thank you.
All right, well, I do think we are back. Classic, let me know if you're not back yet, right? So, okay, we are going to move to item eighteen, consideration of sick leave bank reports. And at this point, I will accept. Start with the first motion.
I would like to move that we approve forty days of sick bank leave request for Mr. Ira Jackson.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Debbie, go ahead.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
Great, thank you. There's another motion coming.
Oh, yes, um, I would like to move that we approve sixty five. Sick relief days. For Miss Kathy Reynolds.
I'll second that.
Moving second it. All right, Debbie.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Earth?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
All right, great.
Uh, I move to approve a sick leave bank request for twenty days for Jennifer Boswell.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, Debbie?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
And Earth?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
Right. That concludes our agenda for tonight, everybody. So appreciate it and meeting adjourned.